Say special. Eight, six oh one, I'll call the meetings in order, this is a special council meeting. Uh, the mayor is, is out of town at the moment, he is joining us via uh, um, Zoom, but has asked me as, as acting mayor to chair, because I'm in the room. And uh, so uh, invited to do that. Um, so first thing, uh, we will, we have, have a singular, single agenda item here, or item agenda, should say, and uh, so, first thing, um, the adoption of the agenda as it, as it sits, and um, we can go, so in terms, I'm gonna uh, ask the vice of the corporate officer here in terms of, regular meeting with council, can we, we can discuss that? Prior to going to close?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so just looking at the agenda, any additions or concerns with the agenda? Page, move it to the first. No, it's, it's got the other, yeah, that's probably the agenda now. Okay, so move, councillor, second, second councillor, we got the agendas as presented, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, carried, thank you. Uh, approval of the minutes of the prior meeting, that's distributed, any questions or concerns, what can you approve of the minutes? Uh, seeking?
Yes, for me.
Okay, so move, uh, second, two, three, come on up, all those in favor?
Just a moment, discussion.
Okay, did you have an issue with it?
I did, on page four, under ten A, um, uh, under the C A O, respectful workplace policy, I don't think that, I think there's something missing here. The reading is during the update, it was noted that the policy regarding bullying and harassment now includes provisions concerning the C A O which were previously not included. And for the record, uh, this should read, it was noted that the policy regarding bullying and harassment still does not contain adequate provisions concerning the C A O as had been previously requested. And I would ask that my repeated requests as to including this important provision be noted in the record at this moment, so I'd like this to be changed, because that was my criticism of the policy as it was presented. I'd also ask for track changes, but I did point out that the policy, as it was brought forward again, did not contain adequate provisions. So if I could be reworded to reflect that, I would be grateful.
Uh, so you, we're suggesting any wording for that?
Yes, in fact, the inverse of what it says, uh, it could simply read that during the update, it was noted that the policy regarding bullying and harassment uh, still does not include adequate provisions concerning the C A O which had been previously requested. That would be my ask for an amendment there.
Okay, um, so if you'd like to move that in, do you have that, uh? Okay, if you'd like to move that, do we have a second, uh?
No, sir.
Okay, second, uh, Alex, um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Yes, thanks.
Opposed? Okay, motions carried. Any other additions or changes to the minutes?
This minute, should we not be voting on amendments as amended, particularly?
Ultimately, you'll have to vote.
Hold on, you're a little bit, I'm asking, so is any?
We're voting on each amendment separately now? Is that appropriate?
Yep.
Okay. Nothing further for me?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor of, of accepting the minutes as amended?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motions carried, thank you. Okay, so we've got minutes. Uh, relax, okay, closure of the meeting, um. So, like to move that we move into closed, uh, proposed, proposed topics for discussion in the absence of the public are legal and recommendations that the meeting may close to the public on the basis of matters considered under the following sections, that begin the charter and where required, the council thus consider that the matters could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they were held in public. And so we're quoting item nine, nineteen, section one A, um, a part of a council meeting may be closed to the public, subject matter being considered relates to one or more of the following, and it's item K, which is negotiations, which I can read or not read at this point, so I'm very familiar with that.
Just under section ninety-one, what, ninety-one?
Ninety-one, pardon me, yeah, my glasses, sorry about that. Okay, nineteen, section one, uh, part K, thank you very much. Okay, anyway, oh, so negotiations related in sections respecting the proposed provision of municipal service that are preliminary stages on that in the view of council, the reason we've been expected to harm the interests of the municipality if they are held in public. Okay, so, um, uh, like to move then, we move into closed, now, we are, um, anticipating every guest in close, so do we need to discuss? We've moved in, so you need a mover and a second, if we're moving to close, right?
So move.
So when, when we decide whether they stay before we get to us? Uh, otherwise they can close, that's, well, once you're in close, then you want to leave. When we leave, those, we're gonna look outside in the cold, and then we're gonna decide, we can, we can have some people outside, it'll be more boring, which is sad, what we wish. But that's, procedurally, that's. Sure, okay, let's do that.
Okay, so we are moving to secondary to move into closed.
True.
Okay. Okay, move down, second, is, right, okay, okay, sorry, I've got them.
Any one of us.
Anyone will do it, perfect, okay, so, uh, all those in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Who's opposed, carried, okay, um, we are in a position where the public cannot be in a closed session unless they're invited to do so. So if I could ask you to be, to go into the back room for just a moment, while council, the in closed session discusses the, the invitation of the public. Okay, uh, welcome to the meeting, the whole meeting for March the fifth, it's, it's currently seven oh seven, and public meeting in order, we've got the floor in present. Uh, Mayor Barry is online, he's out of town, but uh, is, has joined the meeting via Zoom, so uh, he will be in attendance. Um, so, hold the order at seven oh seven, adoption of the agenda, uh, it's, it's a pretty straightforward agenda in terms of discussing the preliminary budget. Uh, any additions or discussion around the agenda? So.
There was the one on table, C A C.
Yeah, C H C was added.
Was that added, that happened, officially added?
Was that not added, just to the budget discussion, or is that?
It's part of the budget discussion, I'm not sure if it's part of the budget direction. We, what exactly we're looking at tonight, that's the, so that's an update from, from the last, we, we spoke about the C A C stuff.
So, the, this meeting and the next few um, are going to involve an interactive Excel spreadsheet that will allow you to add and subtract primarily the supplemental items, in other words, sculpt or massage the budget, so that really, even though you've tentatively identified a core budget, you are gonna have to reconcile that against the list of supplementals, maybe your core budget won't change, but you may want to reduce, maybe, uh, so everything's on the table now?
Yeah.
And it's sort of a live exercise with regard to, uh, uh, contemplating what items are critical, what, which ones you wanna move forward for, for this year's budget, which ones you may wanna park for next year, or put off indefinitely, basically, those are the, the two postponement ideas, next year, and in perpetuity, like foreseeable future. Um, when you get to, and I doubt it will, will be tonight, but when you get to that conclusion, you are satisfied with where things sit, again, tentatively with regard to what will be the tax increase, which is a reflection of the core budget, what we currently do to provide sewer, water, road, et cetera, and all these supplemental items that uh, you have been contemplating, supplemental items, just as a reminder, things like turnout gear for the fire department, these sorts of things. Um, uh, you, 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 once you sort of are reasonably content with what those items are and the number is, step back, you reflect on that, we'll come back to a final committee of the whole, and you can lock that in, unless you guys are a hundred percent sure, uh, you'll have one, there will be ultimately at some point, one last kick of the cap before this thing gets forwarded to council for what in theory is a streamlined decision-making process, because of the hard work that's gone in, so it's on the part of the council, uh, fronting. Picking up on councillor Alex's question, I think, uh, this is just a part and parcel of the preliminary judging discussion, so I wouldn't see it as an additional item on the agenda, et cetera.
This should all be, I, I, I missed the first piece I was looking at.
C A C ask.
Yeah, so all of that, all, every supplemental item needs to be on the table for your, that, that you've decided to move forward.
Okay.
For, for the, the combined discussion is here for you now to discuss, and we're down a financial officer. I'm not sure where.
We can, can I, your, 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 no, we have to, we're, we're in the adoption agenda, so there's no change to be tended.
Okay, there are some on-table items that they are part and parcel of the agenda, okay, so I see a mover, councillor, second, if you have it, all those in favor?
Yep.
I might go, sport that as well, so it's passed, uh, moving to public participation, uh, anyone who wishes to be in the public participation, okay. This is Oregon, you do have two minutes, I take, and I'm trying to see things.
Yes, I know that, but before I start for about that two minutes, I have a proposal. That this is very simple, this is very simple, that you announce in the office that today, starting seven fifteen, seven thirty, the other, other, become, I, I, that time, but even when I called the office, they said at seven.
I'm sorry, and we were running a bit late, and I apologize, I apologize for.
No, no, I'm just, it's, it's, we have to do that, we have to call later, it's, uh, uh, follow up with the.
Go ahead.
Follow up with the, uh, with the, uh, pa- parking committee?
Yeah.
Which is, uh, we have the task force, and also, I know that the public committee is, uh, the parking committee is in the agenda, but there's still nobody taking the action, we are receiving the many unexpected residents, uh, outsiders uh, in the parking, but nothing, no rules, no immigration, no bylaw, no enforcement, nothing at all. What we have to do, after one year and three months, four months, sorry. Where we are, where we are gonna have it, informed, the parking lot, this is a question after a long time.
Okay, would you please, I can, I can address that?
Yes, please.
Sure, okay, um, the, uh, mayor, uh, as a result of repeated requests for parking committee, highway committee, and also there were concerns about the, uh, uh, landscape connector, the, the mayor formed three task forces with a ninety-day mandate to look at all different parking issues, someone killed in the world, some out above, someone in Brunswick, and the committee has met, the committee is reporting out, I believe you're, you have received emails from the mayor which outline the priorities that the committee has, has established, and the, the committee will be making recommendations to the next council meeting, which will be March the nineteenth. So, the next time, uh, so the, the task forces will report out, and council will then, um, make decisions at that time. And that's the best that I can tell you at this point in time, I see that councillors are willing to speak as well.
No, I was just gonna say, you keep saying the committee, the committee, you don't have committee.
No, pardon me, the task force, no, I'm sorry, there, there are three task forces, and the task forces, one of their, the understandings was that task forces would bring their, their, uh, their learning to council.
Yes.
That will happen on the.
There, there is a question there, in fact, of rather, which is, how much is difficult to, eh, to establish a pa- parking committee, it's not a big deal.
That's not, that's not part of this, this discussion, right?
It will, you have to wait till, in March nineteen.
Whether or not, March the nineteenth, council will decide whether they're gonna proceed with the committee, whether the parking committee has recommended that it be.
Online, yeah.
Whatever, that's, thank you.
Something that, I would like to remind you that you and this gentleman, and the other, and also mayor, there, I'm gonna have to respect, respect the time.
Because we, we were late, uh, coming into this meeting because of time pushes, so I'm, I'm gonna ask you to.
Thank you, but, please, it will be, uh, fine.
Okay, thanks for your time, Alex. Okay, uh, we have a document online?
Yeah, we have, please, see that.
Okay.
Hello?
This is Mayor, you, you have four, two minutes.
Can you hear me?
No.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting, um, reaction, so, I just wanted to know, uh, I did not hear if you were reporting out of your, um, special meeting? I didn't hear if there was, uh, reporting out.
There was no report out.
Okay. Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you for that, yeah. Anyone else? Going, going, gone, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so all participation is complete, thank you. Moving to unfinished business. We have our, control the year to three.
Sure, so, um, on the, uh, second page of the package for today, uh, the British Promo Last version of the, uh, budget setage, small changes, uh, based on, uh, the, uh, feedback from, uh, the climate action committee. Um, and, uh, that is to do with, uh, uh, recycling bins at the public works yard, and, uh, that maintenance and then amortization for, um, uh, mostly to do with, uh, the heat pump that, that's anticipated for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Minor changes, um.
So, can we, can I just talk to my, my advisor, or do you know the same?
Yeah, I did, uh, see your email.
Okay, just to point the current issue here, um, councillor, uh, Reuters disappeared, do we know this time?
Yes.
He was, he was saying he wasn't joining us for the.
Too many, oh, okay, I wasn't aware of that, okay. Thank you.
Um, so, it's in receipt of your, uh, updated comments, um, version four, I guess, of the. So, the, um, the bins currently are coming out, um, as, uh, the, by action to be reserved, it's, um, in the public works, uh, budget. Um, with respect to the, um, uh, yearly maintenance, that's also in public works. Uh, out of the reserves, um, all has been drawn is the hundred fifty thousand dollars for the heat pump replacement. Um, with respect to B C recycling, that's currently sitting in, uh, overall surplus, I can move that to climate action.
Okay, so we're looking to, as a better, if you don't mind, maybe we can just go to what I suggested for changes, everyone has stated, and make sure, I'm gonna, yeah, we all understand. Yeah, okay, so the first point was, yes, I changed the price to, to get the, the upgrade to a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and I didn't change the two hundred to six hundred, that was my bad, I just didn't do it. So that, as we will notice, something's seen out there, so that's, that's why that is, okay, so but in the recycling program, if you're to be clear, um, we currently, up until twenty twenty-three, and thirty-five thousand, six hundred, right? So, I'm changing that one, a minute. Change that to this, this cycle project, um, sorry, sorry, um, in the, we're currently in the budget for previous year's L cap. Um, we have a total of a hundred sixty thousand fifty dollars, right?
We can, it's, yeah, we're, we're.
Very first page of my report.
It's, oh, that, that's a lot, that's a lot.
Yeah, so we have a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, twenty-two, one hundred, so a hundred and sixty thousand forty dollars, two, three, one, two, three, four, twenty? I'm forgetting, yeah, absolutely, yeah, how do you see the budget?
Sixty, seventy, four, but, uh, three, that's, uh, in the budget, uh, it's fifty-one thousand eighty per year, um, and that, uh, uh, it's a, we've got, this is our third part of the cycle, uh, so it's the, what's in there is a hundred and sixty, is the carrot uh, amounts from pre, um, uh, L G cap grants, and then three years to end of twenty twenty-four projected, like one hundred and sixty.
Okay, so we have a hundred and sixty, right? A hundred and sixty, okay, okay, so the one line is pretty much what we were asking from that one, tension can be done for that, we've multiple cable. Okay, um, so on the, on the B C recycling program, which will, I haven't, I mean. So, actuals for twenty-two, two, and twenty-twenty-three, the show is fifty-six, five thousand six hundred, right?
I approx, and then, yeah.
Okay, and then we've got a forecast for twenty twenty-four, uh, we assume will be another twenty-six, four hundred, somewhere, right?
Yeah.
We'll make sure we have sixty-two thousand dollars in there.
Yes, and that's currently just sitting in general surplus, it hasn't been allocated to the reserve, um, actually.
We're, 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 we're creating a reserve fund for it?
Uh, I can add it to the, I have the current reserve fund, the fund after, um, if that is the recommendation of, of made at all. That is, is number requirement.
Can we discuss that, does anyone see why that, true that, that was my expectation?
You forgive me, I was dealing with speech park email, can you repeat that?
Okay, so we have the L G cap money, which is climate action mitigation money, um, so Joe hasn't transferred that into the climate action, um.
The recycle B C.
Sorry, the recycles, I'm talking about the B C. Oh, I'm not being very long yesterday, I hate to over this, sorry, recycle B C program, so we have a recycle B C program, the twenty-five thousand on the, comes in each year. Joe hasn't created, he's got a separate fund for the L G cap, I left you stuff, but he hasn't created a separate fund for this, and Joe is saying basically we should move this into the same sort of reserve fund, um, the, the other L G cap, the climate action, times eight. I personally think they should, maybe two separate, so we can track, how are we doing on this B C recycling program separately? Um, because it is a, that's a separate entity, so I'd like to see another fund created, where that was all money, comes from B C cycle, and how is it?
So, then, thank you, through, through the chair, I, I think that does make sense, uh, it's a small amount of money, and it's a bit of a pain to have to do that. However, without it, let me back up, it, it is important to, to absolutely, in my view, it's absolutely important to be able to track the details associated with, with.
Have we said it that way?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, not, not just to go back to, we've got a lot of problems for residents, understand, it's like.
That too, absolutely.
Okay, all right, so we can do this, so kind of be sitting there, as of before, yeah, to me for, like, now, this year, we've got just over sixty thousand, sixty-two thousand, thank you.
Can I ask specifically which pages this is? Can we get a page up, huh?
I'm actually reading, all right, so I'm actually reading from the, my, my.
Yeah, I love it.
There you go.
But I see Joe's got there.
Okay.
There's a lot, a lot of pages.
Okay. So I didn't understand what I thought based on, how old behind, I didn't understand what I thought it was, based on four hours a time and a half, um, using a system rate, and it's going to, and I, I came out at sixteen thousand four hundred and something, I think Joe, you came out at sixteen thousand one hundred, is that the labor cost you came out with it?
That would be, uh, annual operating costs.
Name operating cost, the cost of the labor, you know, which.
Yeah, and that was, um, on the version three, um, and that's currently sitting within the public works maintenance, uh, yard maintenance, uh, budget.
Okay.
And that, that includes the five thousand dollars for education.
Includes five thousand dollars for education, I think someone needs to go back and read into that. I think, if we pay you a time and a half for four hours, over the course of a year, you can spend sixty thousand bucks.
It's very favorite.
Yes. You get, you get check one, yeah. Then, being said, we get twenty-five every year, so it still, still comes to be covered, there's something left over, yeah. Okay, um, so what, so what we need to just understand is, and this idea of having just been five thousand on education, surely if this program in itself is education, right? We, we pay a few people who come down there, recycle their stuff for them, we have someone down there that's telling them the right thing to do, you know, where the right thing goes. I think that is education, so I don't think we need to try find another way to spend another five thousand on top of that, in my opinion, that, that's, that's fine, pretty sure.
Yeah, so, thank you, through you, so my experience around these sorts of programs, uh, these are resources to, that get either emailed, or posted on websites, et cetera, just sort of the quick, easy soundbites of how to, what to look out for, don't do this, but do this instead, real simple, real cheap.
So by my, yeah, so by my thought, we, you know, we don't have to spend four thousand dollars another for, uh, publications or education.
Maybe, no, it's not.
Maybe, I think it's unnecessary, so, I, I'm saying we'd probably get about, be underspending on a annual basis for about seventy-eight thousand. Seems to be insane, and I, and I think that's, you know, shouldn't be, maybe it's a simple ask, um. What I wasn't clear about is, colleagues, in this additional cost for bins, did you, you saw my email, because I, when I spoke to, um, I went, waste, uh, W C S, waste control services, you didn't say collections, uh, waste control services, the last one, I understood they would provide the toilets. Yeah, my understanding is that they all provide the, the receiving containers, but there's gonna be a little bit of, of facility required, rain shelters, tables, um, bins for, uh, C F Ls, uh, you know, that kind of stuff, some of which they will provide, some not, uh, I haven't gone through the I don't call it CapEx, but the, the sort of, but the facility, uh, spent, it's not gonna be huge, um, so, yeah, I, I mean, you know, there, there's gonna be some uncertainty there in the order of a thousand dollars, but, okay, so we've got plenty more budget purposes, so plenty money was.
Okay, I'm, 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 in, in the spirit of, of councillor, kind of saying, can you move along?
I'm trying to move along.
I'm not sure, but, I'm not sure how this is going to impact on, on budget discussions, is it, uh, anyway, okay, go ahead.
Um, so I just wanted to, just give you a carry-on information, I've seen it all, to everyone, could you say, I'm, I'm handling, managed to read it, um, and make sure.
I think people read.
All on board, that they're, just checking, we all on board, this is on track, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I think people read a, a, a context when, when they are reading, and, and, uh, so, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, just to kind of get into the, the meat of the discussion today, um, what I will be presenting is a, a real plan version of, uh, comparing, uh, our planned, five-year plan of capital expenditure versus how we're gonna pay for it through taxation. Um, what I have prepared for account, for the whole, is, um, two scenarios, just to get, and I, give you an idea of kind of where we're at. So if you wouldn't mind turning to page, um, one hundred and, or the page that was in, one, uh, six of your package, is the problem tax, uh, we've increased the scenarios.
This is six, nine percent, twenty-nine percent.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so, um, what I've been trying to, um, balance in this, uh, in these scenarios, and what I'm trying to present to you or convey information about is, um, we have an expectation, uh, based on input from public works about, uh, significant capital expenditures that we, uh, will lead to in per, or at, at least the next five years. Um, and that amounts to about, uh, uh, fifteen million dollars from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. Um, so in order to, what I've done is a, a creative formula to anticipate what our reserves would be, um, after each year funding capital expenditures, and then what tax increase would be required uh, to keep our reserves, um, at, uh, an adequate level, um, you have to consider, um, operating capital requirements, and also our land reserve, um. It, we can't really catch that, so you, if you always. What you say is full reserves, you're basically have to eliminate that portion of it unless we choose to stand up on a. Portion of like property acquisition or, uh, development for sure, uh, which is not anticipated in current capital budget. So. Um, under, uh, scenario one of, uh, completely funding all of the five-year plan. Uh, capital expenditures. You have, uh, an expected property tax increase of twenty one percent, point four, point point two. Uh, twenty percent and twenty five, twenty three percent and so on, an average of twenty three percent over the next five years.
Is there a lure?
Uh, I don't believe there is.
Anybody to shake your.
I I do not believe that is that significant appetite, uh, uh, within the village to, uh, consider that. But that is kind of where you'd be at to fund the anticipated, uh, capital expenditures in other perfect. Expenditures in the, uh, next year or five years.
So, so just to, just to put a finer point, you know, uh, obviously I'm joking with regard to. That statement, but the reality is the village is not financially sustainable. The, the, the question of financial sustainability gets kicked down the road from year to year to year because no one. Wants to bite the bullet and and deal with the true costs of running the village. Which means replacement of water lines, on and on and on. Um, and you you know, in part, we rely. On grants, which is dangerous as far as I'm concerned, because you can't, you can't, you can't run a business. You can't run an organization on the promise of of money. You have to rely on, you run it on based on what you can, you know, your income stream is going to be. So I think the bigger challenge in the long term for council, regardless of the number for this year, is. To turn your mind to what financial state sustainability needs to look like for the village going forward. Whether that is achieved in year one or year twenty one is a decision for council, but to not contemplate that, I think, is a fatal flaw. Not I mean of this council, I mean of generic council.
Yeah, I was going to do my hand, I was going to say we are not just in two ninety eight percent of all hours.
Absolutely.
We're having done the same.
Absolutely not unique. This is a across North America, but let's just focus on Canada. This is an asset management has been a huge issue. Um, yeah, uh, communities and particularly larger communities have, um. Inherited enormous amounts of greenfield development and the associated infrastructure, which over time does not pay for itself. So when, when that infrastructure comes due for for major repair or replacement. It's a huge financial hole, so no lines pay is not unique. Uh, but there have, there are a few sort of poster children of communities that are moving toward this sustainable financial footing. Some of them are fortunate enough to have enough densification and development in the community such that their tax base. Goes up relative to, so the unit rate per meter of water line, et cetera, reduces. We don't have that here. But I think their their council would be wise and ongoing councils would be wise to turn your attention to what that needs to look like. Through the chair, I will say that, uh, you know, I I I think we're a very small community. We we have some real challenges at scale. And we we have to be as creative as we possibly can. Uh, and looking at all the different options, some of them options may be development, some of the options. May may be, uh, tax base, but as we can see, the. Getting, we're not going to have enough tax base to to deal with this. There certainly is a cycle of grant funding from larger, from from the. Larger governments, and that certainly seems to be a department parcel of of what our funding, um. Method has been over the last decades, and I perceive, will perceive what we we the case in the future. I think we need to aggressively seek that out. I know that, uh, we have considered the grant committee and and. And calling on some of the expertise of some of the incredible people that we have in this community. Who who are very skilled with this kind of stuff. So there's not, there's not one solution by anyone's. But we we need to not put aside any solution because, uh, we need them all. Okay. Um. Council, I don't know.
Yeah, I was going to say, some of these communities that do almost densifications are are probably bullying themselves. Another, you know, wave, another tsunami that they're getting by, the, there's also been several. Municipalities, you know, around, you know, versa. And then we're going to actually down that and actually create a bigger problem. So you've got to do it carefully. Right?
Absolutely.
You know, densification and adding infrastructure, you cannot actually make sure that you're going to actually pay for that, because so if you just get a bigger problem. And many have got that wrong. Um, but Michael's point, grant funding is also be part of the revenue district. That's how the high levels of, you know, government and. Uh, sort of federal tax base is built, right? Expectations. So you have to have done. Some forecasting, you have to expect to get some grants. Unless, you know, high levels of government are going to change out of your business completely. You should be expecting to get, what we would make sure is to get more than that face sheet. But it's definitely part of, it's definitely going to be part of the, you can't just, assuming not getting grants, it's not responsible either.
Yeah, true, yeah. Thank you. Uh, so, so in response, um. Yeah, every community hopes they're going to get grads. Um, and a lot of communities put all their eggs in those baskets. Grants come and go.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and to me, that's a, that's sort of winging it. It's very, very helpful to have. The advantage of these grants to take care of some of these huge infrastructure challenges without a doubt. All I'm saying is it's dangerous to bank on that as this forever ongoing industry. Uh, but, you know, I think what's really important for the community to be aware of is is that with regard to these. You know, the inching along of our property taxes, not only are, is that informed by, um. Uh, inflation, inflationary costs, but also changing regulations. I mean, you look at, although it doesn't directly affect. By any, you look at the recent adoption of bills forty five, forty six, forty seven, that's going to. Have significant complications for those communities affected, not Lions Bay. But I could, at this point, for sure.
Yeah.
But there are other things that Lions Bay needs to be contemplating going out into the future. So for instance. I think it would be why is at some point for the community to have a discussion for life after septic fields. Because I could absolutely see the province in this location, based on our, our geology and so forth. I could absolutely, at some point in the future, foresee the province changing the regulations and requiring, uh, a, a, a commitment to. To, um, a move to, uh, uh, a formal distribution and treatment system. So.
Mm-hmm.
These are some of the big, long-term. Questions of financial sustainability that I think are important at some point for council to be contemplating. Not that. Council have any answers, but at least they're.
Yeah, so for the first time before that, we heard that they have resolved, obviously, um, but. Um, for tonight, okay, are we going to get, should we get back to this and see what we actually got from our hand in short term? Um, we've got, we have other questions. Do I understand the third part of this table? Um, then you're not. Not for an increase per, how are the property there?
Oh, right, so.
What is, what exactly is that? How to calculate it? What is it supposed to mean?
So, um, I pulled down a rule, uh, house assessment, um, uh, rules from DC homes, um, housing. Uh, and, uh, identified, I stratified, um, by, so we know what the, like, under a. Use of these percentage increases, how much the property tax increase is, um, I calculated, um. Percentage wise by housing. So there we have one, one property that's over ten million dollars, um, and so their. Yeah, contribution, if we did a twenty one percent increase in tax, would be five thousand dollars, five two hundred, five thousand two hundred dollars for for them. The majority of the, um, assessments are between, um, uh. One to two point nine million, um, and for for those properties, uh, a twenty one percent increase would represent about. Five hundred fifty three dollars. For next year. The, does that make sense?
Yeah, there's none, okay.
Okay.
And so the next page, uh, the scenario, say, we do a nine percent property tax increase year over year to twenty twenty eight. Um, in order to make the, um, uh, budget work, um, from, uh, that time period, um. Twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight, now we have to, um, reduce our infrastructure planning by six billion dollars. Um, and so we'd only be spending nine million dollars between, uh, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight. Um, uh, it's in for clarification, twenty twenty four is in there, because we've already kind of basically. Prove the twenty twenty four capital spend. So this is what's coming in the long term.
In the long term, yeah. Um, just looking at the nine percent increase over five years, the nine percent is, um. Nine percent on the nine percent on the nine percent, so it's actually fifty four percent.
Yeah.
Increase of over five years in common, yeah, yeah. So I don't know what twenty one percent does, so it's pretty scary.
Yeah, there's, there's an example, um, uh, under the twenty eight. One percent scenario, uh, so for the majority of our homes, um. Yeah, the total tax increase, uh, would be about four point seven thousand dollars over that period of time. Uh, per home, uh, under the nine percent scenario, it would be one point one thousand four hundred dollars over that period of time. So, um, what, uh, if you draw your attention to page eight. Uh, so it's a schedule A or five-year plan, uh, under scenario one, which is the, uh. Twenty one percent tax increase, um, and, um, it's a balanced budget. Uh, drawing on reserves from the gas tax fund, um, and then spending, um, in accordance with a five-year time. So. So I guess really what's for discussion here, uh, and I, my request for direction or discussion anyways. Uh, to put it front of council, so I'm going to go back about table two. So we, so page five. Of forty nine. This is the capital request starting from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight. Uh, again, twenty twenty four isn't in there, we've discussed that in our group's meetings, and we're. Basically, uh, comfortable on, on, on next year's capital expenditures. Uh, so twenty twenty five, twenty twenty eight, in accordance with our current capital, um, plan, um, is fifteen. Point six million dollars of stratify or organized by year, by activity. Um, and, uh, so that is what drives, uh, the twenty one percent, thirty two percent tax increase. To find all of this, and that's just what's been identified. There may be other things that come up. But just to get to a balanced budget, that will require to find all of this. So really the question is. Are we going to move some of the stuff down the line if we want to, um, have a lower tax increase? Um, and are we considering, um. Because we're going to be drawing on reserves to pay, even if we cut it down, we're still drawing on our reserves. Um, is there any plan or contingency in case something comes up that we just don't know about? Um, and, uh, so it's, it's really a discussion for the committee to, uh, think about. Well, a longer term horizon, um, how are we financially sustainable? Um, and, um, are certain of these projects, something that we should just completely eliminate from our budget and our. Our, um, in, aim to present a balanced budget, uh, as an example. Um, let's say, okay, well, we can't just spend five point one million dollars in twenty twenty five on construction or road drainage. Water may not center baby and our baby. Um, do we keep that down the road or do we completely scrap it until we get a grant for it? That's going to affect, um, what the tax increases are when we're planning for, and tax increases are for a five-year financial plan. Um.
But good though. You're not locked into that, right? I mean, whatever numbers council decides for next year, you're going to revisit those next year. And you're going to make decisions on those. You're not locked into those numbers. You could say there's a hundred percent tax increase next year. And then when next year comes around, you work through all of those items and it ends up being six percent. So, uh, the, I, the five-year, for those that don't know, I guess, the five-year. Component to your financial plan. I would refer to as an indicative plan rather than a concrete plan. The budget you're adopting for twenty twenty four. Is concrete, it's not indicative. This will define, specifically define spend for this year. But twenty twenty five, et cetera, it's a rolling five-year period. It's merely an indicative budget.
So we, what do we have to do here tonight or during this budgeting cycle? I mean, we logically in a sense, you take. A big amount of like the five of one, you just spread it over five years. Rather than the show all next year. This is to do that. So, uh, is Joe, are you running through this?
Yeah, so, uh, what, um, in, in those scenarios, um, is. What's currently in our five-year plan, if we have to spend in each year for that five-year plan, um, it'd be. It is even more than twenty one percent because of the immediate capital requirement. So what I've done is a spread in the, um, uh, anticipated cash flow and infrastructure spend of smoothed it out. Um, so that we're really got some more money upfront and then, uh, drawing it down as we go along. Um, it, uh, yeah.
We shouldn't have fixed bar.
So that's, um, yeah, that, that, that's what is our current fire plan. And so when I. Go to like the page seven for that twenty seven percent, uh, it's okay, it's only three million dollars in each year from twenty twenty five, right? So I've kind of spread it out that way to ease the pain, assuming all of these are still on the table. Um, so my goal to present a five-year plan. Um, which we're, uh, uh, required to present, uh, published is, uh, the balanced budget. Uh, we weren't right at zero, um, balanced budget. Um, what affects that is a decision on what you keep in for your five-year plan, uh, and, uh, it's, uh. I guess, as, as Mr. Blackwell had mentioned, in, um, in indicative, not concrete, you can change it every year. Um, but what I would require direction from council is. I do have published a five-year plan.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, what's going to drive the tax rate, please give me the balanced budget, is. What in these items can be displayed or whether we currently have adopted, um, and have, uh, no feedback from one other work. Are we, um, do we park some of this stuff, like permits? Would we take it off? Uh, so that, if you want. I'm going to, in another way to say it, if you want to get to a six percent increase in taxes next year. Half of this stuff has to come on the table completely. Uh, we can track it separately, but not have a balanced budget, six percent. Having all of these, um, plant and structure projects on the table right now.
So. Okay, uh. Quick suggestion, Joe, can you address what level of drawdown on surplus and reserves? You'll contemplate.
Um, my.
Do you have that, were you going to do that interactive spreadsheet?
Yes, um, to me, sure.
Because that might sort of, that'll allow council to work through all of these things. So it may be hard to sort of collect all this information in your mind.
Before we meet the needle for space, you're assuming some grades to assume the end of fifty one thousand dollars in grades between thirty five hundreds.
It'll be, um, what we know for sure.
So those are the things like.
Yeah, that's money, like, right? Um, I can take it off, um, anything that's.
So you assume we don't get any grants, you presume we don't get any other money, any other way, or land sales, previous councils used to have land sales at the focus. Some to make and some do.
Joe, can you just?
None of those, right?
Okay, go ahead, uh, Ken.
Joe. Can you just remind us, Joe, of of what the other communities are are, uh. Coming in at, because this is an exceptional year with with inflation. Uh, the way it's been going. So can you give, give us just a a recap of what the other communities are doing?
Sure, um, and so that was, uh, part of why I did a second scenario at nine percent, which is generally what, um, I've been seeing. Um, and more is coming in about nine percent, um, hold on here one sec. Page, some pages. Third. To me. Uh, generally, uh, the average tax rate increase is about nine percent. Uh, uh, product apparel communities in lower mainland, Belpara, eight percent going on, nine point five, Vancouver, seven point six. Quarterly eight, we're only point nine, spot nine. So that's why I have this number two at nine percent. Um. But, yeah, the, we. But yeah, the we'd generally higher uh than what the uh we uh had historically had for a tax increase.
Can I just introduce my question again?
Yeah.
We have unusually high reserves and unusually high surplus, which represents previously taxable but unspent monies. What are we doing with them?
Um so those uh reserves, um I have a reserve analysis in in the package, um if we. We will use that up within two years, um assuming we go with the current five year plan. Um uh the current prior plan, we actually won't actually last past twenty twenty four, uh based on current timelines. So there needs to be some decisions about what projects we're actually getting. Go for and when we're going to.
Joe, could you just, Joe, would you mind just uh recapping those reserves? Because um the the property reserve funds seem to be rather low with the some of the sales that we've had previously. Cause my understanding was that those reserve funds are only to be spent for. Uh well, in the case of selling waterfront property for waterfront. So that it seems to be abnormally low. Can you just give us a recap of that?
Sure, no problem, um so I I did uh um share uh in response to your question earlier last week. Um about the the land reserve in particular. Um that was part of the guest, as in the wastewater treatment plant, um and it's being repaid through partial taxes. Um those funds can't be spent or reserved uh for um improvement or purchase of properties. Uh 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 through access to the waterfront. Um so in my uh. Reserve, what calculations were. Figuring out what in what we're spending for capital infrastructure and what percentage tax increases would be required to fund that. Um. Also incorporate uh the requirement not to dip into the uh the land reserve. So we're drawing from the infrastructure reserve, the capital reserve, gas tax reserve. Um and uh and our general reserve. And that that one page seven sixteen of the package, you can see.
Yes, point of clarification, there was there was a million dollars that came through and and now and and there've been certain projects that have not. That were were scheduled to go ahead this year because of their last year, right, twenty twenty three, actually. There were a number of projects that were were deferred, so so that's put money. Left money on in in reserve to to go towards the projects this year, is that right?
To the most part, that relates to our big projects at flat building, um and like they each part that are grant funded.
Yeah.
Um so we were on the budget last year, but we're. But we included the grant revenue top line and then the capital cost plus our portion. Um uh below the line. Right, uh same thing this year.
We're not submitting infrastructure projects, so that that were scheduled to go ahead and and we did not go ahead and we were start funding.
We added two million dollar uh to my recollection, I I did a two million dollar uh two million thirty three thousand dollars capital plan. Um some of that stuff did, most of that, majority of that was plaid in life they just heard.
Okay.
But what was left there was not.
Let's not, okay. So I'm just, so you say goals and reserves covered.
Effectively, without recapting here, is that um we have all six million dollars in the bank. Um of that, uh a million dollars um is um reserved for the land reserve, we can't touch that line. Um we need about a million and a half for um operating departments. And and so when you spend the rest of it. Getting a piece for the line to the beach park, I'm just a bunch of the flat building. What was left over there we're spending on um is coming out of our residual cash effectively.
So we're going to page sixteen, so the bottom, the right number, maybe the bottom, this is drawing from reserves cover.
Yeah.
So that is what you're suggesting with northern reserves this year.
Yeah.
In order to balance. The capital spending, we. What all the items we all said we were gonna, we weren't gonna keep down there.
For twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four, yeah. So we're gonna decrease our reserves in twenty twenty four from seven point one million down to four point nine million. So. You happy we're spending fast enough? We all, if we did, we'll say we're spending, there's much bigger drawn reserves than I think we've seen in any other year.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my contention has always been that represents taxable but unspent projects and it's now time to do it. You know, reserves, I I would call that surplus, the reserves are something else slightly different, but. Like the infrastructure reserve, the gas tax reserve, that that's council's discretion, obviously, when when to spend that, uh now might be a good time. Um but they're sort of two separate parts, right?
Um this one, the interesting question of. Which is, Joe, why why do some of these? Funds get interest and others not, actually, none of them does.
Climate action.
No, 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 no.
No, so the uh correlates your uh gas tax plan, capital construction, they're uh. Uh uh. Historically, several reserves, uh uh statutory, non statutory climate action has always been kind of sitting very within surplus. We haven't been historically doing a investigation because it's. Interesting, interesting, that one specific thing, I just carved it out for um purposes of uh clarification. Uh you know, for this one specific betting, like what's in there, I mean, there's also the water surplus, there's the uh sewer surplus. And what have you, we don't, okay, and so those are all very altogether within the general surplus presentation purposes, I. Uh I can show the climate action so that you can do some, the committee can uh plan where.
Okay.
Um. Uh it's just a quick question, but what's what interest rate we're currently getting on our on our research?
Um cash currently is five point four.
Okay.
Um if I, this goes back to the question from the previous council meeting about variable of the uh investment policy, I can get to you. Uh six point two uh as of today. Um actually, on one year, they both two years is actually goes down to five point nine. Uh and they're pricing in uh tax rate decreases, so.
So we're we're in the five, five point five to six range.
Yeah, the strat fight based on amount of uh investment cash account.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Just a question around that, I think I asked the question last, the similar question before, but it wasn't clear. Um that is this something that that the auditor reviews, like where our funds are invested and how they're invested? And and the rates that we're invested at?
No.
That's not an audible.
That way of putting it balanced, um as far as investment policy, um that um it's.
Not within the scope of their review.
And for the council, if we had a policy and then we were outside on how we addressed it, or it was a policy. And yeah, for sure, that's.
So we shouldn't be relying on maybe the auditor to be guiding us in any way.
No. Okay, uh using as a sounding board, whether you're at other clients, uh not doing.
Right, with um. Is that something you would do, that's a formal, you know, pass it with, you contact them and say this up?
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
So the auditor doesn't doesn't make suggestions that we should have a. An investment policy?
Um we've had an investment policy, I brought that forth, though I realized we didn't, and we never sitting a bunch of excess cash, but we had no feedback from the auditor. Uh have adopting a formal investment policy, um I don't remember the goal, but that's a requirement of the audit. Um that's more of a function of council.
Okay, so it seems to me that it's maybe a a role that the finance and audit maybe would would take on. Because they have more more skin in the game as as residents, certainly. Versus somebody on the other side sort of lucky in things, you know.
Fair good.
Good.
And and investment policy is pretty slammed stuff, I mean, it's boilerplate.
Yeah.
I I I think this is just simply a staff question. Staff develops a a policy, council assesses it with regard to whether to the degree which it's comfortable.
Okay.
Did we decide what we wanted to do in the last meeting?
Uh yeah.
Take a look, explain.
Yeah, uh by me.
Yes.
Uh Council Royer had uh some comments, uh it's just to refine some of the language, so it's not so um it's more clearly defined. Uh but otherwise he was fine with it, so we actually need to revert that for, um there were something, uh two sentences that I need to update to be more specific.
Okay.
Okay, so over the piano here is kind of the underlying uh model, driving uh. Tax, they kind of balance uh our budget to uh.
Is is this screenshot before almost something?
That's sweet, I believe so. Yeah, so that's, so what I highlighted here is six percent, um that's last year, uh six percent, five point four. So this is what, if we just kept it at six percent every year to twenty twenty. Um and we have fifteen point six million dollars in uh five year time expenditures. Yeah, we're playing for. Um we're running a deficit, now I'm just gonna.
So minimize the uh.
Two. I can't, we can't do that. I'm in my, in my.
Maybe the little bar is possible.
Same regarding the front, this is down there as well, yeah, I I minimize on this laptop. Um okay, so where we're at, oh, there it is, great. Now we're on here. It does. So we really need a six percent um each year, and then we spent in accordance with capital plan, we've been uh running a deficit and reserve every single year. And remember the five point six million dollar deficit um by twenty twenty eight. Um what uh so what uh there are options are either. Adjust the top on property tax increase up to cover that deficit or take out. Um I. Plan expenditures over the next five years on infrastructure. Um. Re-lead. Or uh five year plan. Reflects adapted every year, can't do that, so we need to balance, this number needs to come to zero, and that's pass through strong reserves, which is not currently pulled down. This page feeds the five year. So as an example, yeah, I adjust. Then we're in the black. One important thing to understand is that this ending reserve balance can't come under um one million dollars in every any year. And then by twenty twenty eight, they have to be one point four million. This is for the land reserve uh that we can't touch. So why we're currently in this scenario? Why you have a negative ending reserve in twenty twenty five, this could be a seven point seven five uh million dollar plan expenditure. Uh in twenty twenty five. If I change that to three million. Then the numbers look, we're in the black much every year, then we spend ten million dollars in twenty twenty eight, looks of an upper server. So that's how it's kind of been formed, um so I guess. At the end of the day, I can, this number, our property tax increase, is really dependent on what the appetite is, or commitment is for a. Capital spend to twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight. That's really what the question is, um and so we go to. Here, that this is what's really driving the problem, uh you know, in in a way of saying. Um this is the big elephant in the room, um of course, uh this is not a new. Uh there's no new information, it's just been in uh the five year plan for a number of years, there are active management, the. Uh the new recommendations. This is within the five year plan, so for us to say, get to a nine percent, a ten percent tax increase. This stuff has to be for sure, and this one in particular removed or eliminated. Um. We, I can do, I can do the math however you like, but realistically, we cannot spend. We do not have the reserves or resources to spend seven point seven million dollars in twenty twenty five. Shoot, that's the tax work, but even then it's crazy, that number's been to um. We maintain our reserve amounts, we have to come in at approximately. Uh you know, six percent tax increase in twenty twenty five to bid for it. So if you move this later or smooth it across a few years, it's more. Manageable or feasible, but that being said, you're still in a pretty significant tax increases. So if you don't want, there's no appetite for twenty percent plus tax increases every single year, no matter how sliced and diced timing of these payments. Some of this stuff has to come off completely off the table.
Well, we have to give more revenue, or we have to assume we're gonna get to a grant.
Yeah, yes, and so the and so part of the, by me, um uh apologies to council, uh part of the reason why. This budget, this is brass tax. Not counting on any sort of grant, we don't know for any certainty that we got that, we had a two point two million dollar um uh debit project that that we were denied funding for with grant. It's off the table. Um this uh five point one million, and in the five year plans, like P D math, maybe, correct? No, it's applied for, we have no idea. So this is basically presenting.
But those project, the the work project isn't the same numbers that. They were turned into a brand. You know, they're not good at that, so. We're back to you, but anyway, um so what do we do? We know, we can't predict those packages, the five year plan, obviously. And I'm saying we're not forecasting any other kind of revenue. Not planning any more land sales, basically.
So we basically, and I know we're getting some input, uh Mr. Ferr has on on the capital spend. Um my my recommendation would be, okay, well, what's an appetite for a tax increase? And hopefully, um um we can have a portion of our building for adding for research or reducing them. And then you know. What is mission critical here um on the five year plan, absolutely have to do. And then eliminate the other items until such a time that maybe we get some grant item, uh grant uh income or the revenue stream to fund them. And then put it back on the table again, this is more of this this next quarter, we wanted realistically, depending on the information. But for the purposes of the five year plan that we're presenting forward, uh for council or commission, they have to bounce this zero. And if you want it to balance this zero with the current five year plan, uh capital expenditure, so twenty two percent increase over here. That's just the map.
But in previous, you know. On previous councils, what, you know, the financial officers come forward with is, well, there's strategies around landing sales and so on, they forecast that in. Come to something in the source of Paris, which um we did with the forecast, and that's what we finally found.
But I mean, uh I remember before I had um. Previous uh twenty twenty two budget, yeah, seven million dollars in land sales, and then wishing to realize. Um it's uh in the previous budget session, and I did what, okay, well, we guys spent some money over to get some brass. So that's how we balanced it, but it just seems fictional to me, um there's no actual in place. This becomes a very uh. Long term concept in uh council where um. You can, you can wish or work for anything, but if it's not actual plan in place, um your management council has committed to a plan, it doesn't exist. And to my knowledge, uh there's no plan, nothing that's been committed to other than an expression of interest in pursuing grants or meaning we sell some on this. Unless it's a uh you you can't. Unless it's a uh you you can't imagine, and this is our discussion, we'll call council. Council doesn't have a plan in place or a specific outcome. Should be contributing to your projections, because there's no plan.
Joe, okay, totally not following you. Uh so I'm not sure if you're gonna be doing like you and I talked about, which is having a running list of. These items and and have council work through that list and subtract to get to that number of odd, I don't know if you've done that. But I've been down this road before with regard to. Uh grant eligible projects, those are separate categories, they're put over on the side, all these projects are on the radar, so on and again, perhaps. It ceases to be part of the discussion, it's a parking lot. The meat and potatoes, as far as I see it, is everything else, everything that is contained in that list of supplementals. Which we can't do all of them, but is are you gonna walk council through? So a running time, like I don't know what you're doing here, I don't, I said, I can't help you, I can't support you exactly.
If if I could just uh identify the fact that that. If you don't know which road, you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there, sort of thing, right? So I I think, you know, we we kind of council's been starting to get together with the strategic planning session and really. That you know, really envisioning where this where this community needs to go and, you know, seeking input from from residents and so on. So I'm hoping that that will occur, you know, quickly and then that that will, I think, once once you've got a much. Clear set of goals that we want to achieve in the community, I think, then things start to fall into place a little bit better than. So hopefully that that will occur.
So if I could, that's only with regard to larger projects. The meat and potatoes of your budget is S C B A's is.
This won't be nice to you, we asked you agree to a five year plan that shows twenty to to twenty five percent. Tax increase, we're not gonna agree to that.
Right, so and so I'm not.
So so we need to understand what the alternatives are and within the plan, right? So either lower our expectations of expenditures or look for other ways to create income. Or are are we looking at um at loans to to cover some?
To I think to Ross's point tonight, what we should be focusing is whatever we're doing in twenty twenty four about these applications. The the five year, how we presented the five year plan, do you have to be a little more creative again?
If I could suggest maybe.
Ross, you've talked about, we've talked about these capital projects, so you know, we we've got quite a list of capital projects there, but. In reality, we we haven't been able to uh to perform and bring any any of these capital projects that are sizable. Projects in on on time and on budget. And we've got uh we've we've got the beach park ahead of us here. Uh which, which of course uh i- is going to be a a good test for us, but. But until we establish that we can actually execute on these capital projects. I think some of the this list might be a little unrealistic at this early stage and. And you've talked about, you you sort of alluded to it earlier about the financial sustainability of the village and and. Really that brings to mind, you know, what's the vision of the village, so. That that's almost coming back to uh a strategic uh planning session and and even uh. You know, uh getting together with the village and a town hall and asking the village uh what vision we see in the future, because. I mean, just to uh to put a a list that's uh really unattainable forward is is not realistic. I mean, uh we you know, we've got enough on our plate with the beach park and the clap building, uh let alone. Uh the list that we have up here, so I think we're gonna have to pare that back pretty dramatically, but I also think that um. And maybe you can comment on it, Ross, but but I think, you know, we're gonna have to solicit. Feedback from the villagers and find out what we want to do and what the vision of the village is moving forward, because. Uh the these expenditures are just. Uh not sustainable. Ross, can you give us some feedback on that, on on, you know, what what your thoughts are on a str- strategy planning that? Because as a council, that that's something that we we do need to sit down and do, I think, earlier than later.
Sure, happy to do so. So there are various scales at which all of this, these moving pieces work at. Um there's the long term, the the I refer to the coarse grain scale. Uh you spoke about, you know, what is the vision of the community and so forth. Well, part of that vision is. Livability, but what are the things that inform a livable community? It's things like being able to age in place, it's having reliable water, it's having a ta- tax, the property taxation that is. Is reasonable uh and and on and on and on. So I think that is certainly a a community scale discussion. Uh at the other end of the the spectrum is sort of an operational scale that staff need direction on. There is always gonna be more. More items on the to do list than can be done. Every year, staff will be bringing that list to council for council to prioritize. Uh part of that prioritize, that prioritization is gonna be informed through the council strategic planning process. But part of it is just fundamental, keeping the lights on every day stuff. So if you look at that list before you. Uh some of these, some of these big projects, they have to happen, otherwise you don't have water. So this is not about the community's vision, unless the community wants to vision whether or not it wants water. This is the, many of these projects are just to maintain the current, the current status, so not doing it is not an option. There are gonna be other projects in the list that are either grant dependent or. Will rely on other considerations, et cetera, et cetera. Those are sort of optional um uh projects. As far as I'm concerned, reading this list here, this is a consolidation of everything. Uh one would be better, as I say, and for me, with what I'm used to is. Breaking it out, here are the grant dependent projects, we we acknowledge them, yes, good to go, and we ever need ground money. We'll entertain these. And at the other end of the spectrum, here are the the key projects that we need in order to keep the lights on, the water running and. So on and so forth. Um you may well have more projects of that nature than we can fund. And that's the purpose of this sort of discussion and having a real time spreadsheet that allows you to switch in projects at their cost. As well as how to fund them, it is is a great way for you to reconcile these push pull factors. So I, you know, I I'm not entirely sure where Joe was going with this, so as I said, I'm not able to. Sort of in the dark here, so I'm not entirely sure how I can help out with 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 respect to Joe's presentation. So I'm gonna have to defer to Joe with regard to where he wants to take counsel on this tonight.
If I can maybe just interject, I think we've got two issues here. One is that Joe has to file a five year plan.
Yes.
I suggest that uh some of these projects have to be moved below the line, um and they are a grant contingent projects. Um or other kind of money, but but specifically debt. I I haven't seen any mention of of taking on more debt, nowhere near our debt cap. Um so that you can give a balanced budget that you can file as required. Um and then we have a second issue, and that is passing this year's budget. Uh which has some numbers in it that I believe are are so high that that we haven't actually talked how we're gonna fund this year. And have to be done.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you we've discussed, for example, a million dollar water contingency project. Funded entirely by by our own resources, not grant funded, not nothing funded. Um. That's what I'm particularly interested in, because I've got people champing in the bit that that, you know, I I'm saying, I need a design, but I can't let you loose on it yet, because. We're gonna run out of water in in six months' time, but we haven't actually passed the budget yet. So this. We have to move a whole bunch to start out, because we can't present a non balanced budget, and then we have to pass this year's budget, almost two separate budgets.
Yeah, normally in my experience, Carl, it's you do the annual budget, and then once you scope that and. Flesh out the the rest, really all sort of flows out. Maybe there's different techniques, but that's the one I'm I'm used to. So as I say, I'm. I'm in the dark here, not doing what Joe's strategy is here, so I will pack the authority over for that direction, I hope I can. So.
Our contention is you should be back to this year's budget, the supplemental, we decided we're paying, we're not making, taking anything else from this.
Yeah, the the risk is gonna come and wash us, because another has to be zero at the bottom of the bucket.
Yeah.
But we need to see twenty twenty four, because if we run on top.
And as you know, uh to um return to what I said earlier, the beginning of the meeting. Um just to remind everybody that, you had the conversation around the core budget. Council tentatively lock in a number, you work through the supplemental for twenty twenty four. But now you have to work through the combination of the two reconciles. To understand what is on and what is off the budget for twenty twenty four. My expectation would be that, once that's done, then Joe is in a position to flesh out the other details, create a five year plan. But I don't I don't wanna mess with Joe's strategy, I'm not sure what you've got, yes.
So. Yes. There's a five point one million, which may be potentially a D map funded, uh we're gonna apply for anything. I keep that off the table, and if you all potentially grab that project, knowing that. Oh yeah, more certainty or but finding certainty with the rest of that. And then I had to go up another significantly capital project. Um and that was in twenty twenty, or I take over uh completely, you know, the fire truck replacement in twenty twenty eight. Now, so we've got um seven point seven million dollars in uh funding. Uh uh or infrastructure projects over the next five years. And if we go here and do a, so this number needs to equal. One point four million pounds. So we could go to seven percent, eight percent. Seven, seven, seven. Or six, six, six. Basically, we're funding, absent um uh any additional grant funding. Uh and then put another project back on the table. Um and basically add to your reserves. And have a seven percent tax, which is, I would say is kind of low. Um with what um our uh the current payments are, but that would be was balanced. Um I guess um what uh direction I would be seeking really is on uh these projects. Uh in in five year plan on what should we just basically take out for now? Um and then add that we get more certain deals to a grand um or or what have you. Um and I. For instance, if that five point one million dollar project that was originally slated for twenty twenty five, is D map funded? Well, then, great, that's um.
Do you want to explain what what we was gonna do and have funding, what what that is?
So let's do the after mitigation adaptation fund, it's forty percent fund, it is stackable. Uh we we are still under evaluation, I check every other day. Um we are application number two thousand five hundred sixty six, uh I guess it takes them a while. Uh I can get no estimate, uh you know, those are contingent projects, those are grant, I mean, at five point one million, we still have to do the project.
Yeah, I'm just saying that that, you know, letters sort of are confusing everyone.
Yeah, it's a grant project, say that they are. It's a federal grant, which is not provincially supported.
Right.
It's only a forty percent grant.
Right, okay.
Which we have no necessary, uh you know, we will be lucky to get something like that. But it's one of the few remaining nuts and bolts, throw concrete type type of projects mostly. And it's got this prime prime adaptation thing on it.
Um I think it seems to me that some of these, some of the the needs are are. Are are getting, are a bit dynamic, for example, fire truck, we we believe we needed, you know, urgently. And then that we found out that that wasn't necessarily the case. Are are there other, are there other things that that have evolved over the. The budget cycle that we've been rocking here? I mean, are are there things that we found aren't gonna be as much? And some things that are that are a bit more, or, you know, I'm just trying to understand in terms of nailing down the twenty twenty four budget. Are are the numbers that we're we're we have so far, are they pretty solid? Is there anything that's shifting or? Kind of is that our closed discussion or?
That's pretty much locked in. So. I haven't had any further feedback.
Other contingencies.
On on these. So really, um what I was trying to share was the um. Five year, uh twenty twenty five to twenty twenty eight portion of uh anticipated infrastructure spending, capital spending. Uh based on our current five year plan. Um.
So what we're saying here is, if we, all the things that we maybe we need, we need not to. We agreed to keep the one place, we're back in the middle of the three. If we do all of that, we're gonna draw. One point nine million dollars in our reserves this year.
That doesn't include the supplementals you've brought forward that are. With regard to the uh, with those ones you brought forward tonight.
Well, I'm waiting for tonight, I've been, I came for the very first meeting.
Yeah, we're discussing. So to your point. You know, you, okay, I didn't see them all. It's critical for council now to reconcile the, so so what you see here is the first cut. At what, at the resulting leftovers of uh of what you decided to move forward. So you have to reconcile this, one point seven million dollars rounded. Against the core budget that you have already identified at six percent. Plus, don't forget the utility, the block as well, but the core budget is six percent tentatively. And now you have this, so you have to look at the combination of those two as. As an ask residence, and you're gonna have to evaluate whether you're comfortable with that list or the core or both. And which items you may want to change or to get these numbers to where you're comfortable. Can we go back to the twenty four, Joe?
Yeah.
The the big, the big question is, we want to continue.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a contingency, so I can't tell you what's in it. Um you know, the plan had originally been that it was gonna be the highway tank replacement. Through assiduous effort, we now realize that it's probably not the tank itself, there are, there are downstream leaks that we have different ways of addressing. So some of the other water contingencies are reactivating the Alberta intake. There's two options there, there's putting a mini plant in that's gonna operate seasonally, that will feed some somewhere between sixty and ninety houses. You guys are gonna flow that's in Alberta Creek. Another one that may be uh worth doing, because we know that we let some, as. Those of you who remember the water report, what they've seen, we let some parts of Magnesia Creek spill by. We could build an extension to the Magnesia Creek treatment plant, simply by building out. Footprint and putting another wall and then coring out the wall. I need engineers to look at that, but you know, uh at a certain point I have to start. Pre-spending my budget. Um there 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 are various other water contingency projects. The the issue or contingency is it needs to be spent by middle of almost, spent and operational, so that these are. It's it's time to not mess around on that, or we can just sort of hope for the best. Uh I don't think this is a good year to hope for the best.
Or or we could take it off the list, and we could also come back and revisit our budget, when we actually know what it is we need to do.
I would still need budget for all the plans that we've required, because in order to get to any sort of reasonable number, you know, past B type of estimate, I need to spend money. And and to be perfectly honest, um slap my wrist if you need to, uh people are looking at it now.
Okay, so we we understand what the the design components of those areas. Studies are are is, and have what that value is.
Yeah.
We found that now, and if we do, and one of them turns out to be a winner, and it's gonna be effective, and we're gonna get over it, then we have to come back to the budget.
Yeah, I mean, all of these are on, you know, expanding the Magn- Magnesia tank, for example, we have to do that at some point. Uh doing it in a hurry is a different kettle of fish. The only one that's sort of a um. Now's the time to do it, if we're ever gonna do it, is to re-activate the Alberta uh intake. Because Alberta Creek flows through the village seemingly consistently, uh and we don't lose it. Um so it's essentially pretty important. Uh so, yes, that's right, and each of these.
Do we know what the cost is to reactivate that Alberta Creek?
No, no, I I need to spend money for a design. So each one of these feasibility studies is in the name. So each one of these feasibility studies is in the nature of thirty five thousand dollars, and I have four. So we have a hundred thousand dollars in planning money, budgeted and 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 tax for, so that's the money I'm spending. Council needs to validate that it does roll over, but I'm just taking it for granted that council will. It needs to be charged up. I need a little bit more than a hundred thousand if I'm gonna do all these feasibility studies, and they all need to be done. Now. Okay, so the four, two different options for Alberta Creek? Yeah, uh, expanding the um, Magnesia Creek, uh, the Magnesia plants tank. And the fourth one, which I just wrote this afternoon, I'll have to remind myself, give me a second, we'll come back to things. Uh, I hope that is another big project that has to be done, and that's to do with skater, skater type enhancements of the first control system for the water system. That has to be done now because we have to find readings far so that we can activate it quickly. So it's mostly to do its own return. That's on the list. It is on it, but it's needed. Let me sort them. Do a five. Do a five. Yes, let's move it. So. So the water contingency, so um. Isn't this way that I C can help? We can actually do, shouldn't we do a high level panel study to decide which of these. The options is most likely to fix the short term solution. Yeah, I sort of jumped the gun on that one in that I'm getting these visibility studies done both in terms of, you know, what's in involved hy- in a hydraulics. Um, and uh, what would it cost? And then with with that information, we could then the the I C consulting look at it. But by that time, I think we will know the answer. So you're absolutely right, Council, we don't need the million dollars approved now, but probably gonna need it. We hope we're gonna need. Hopefully, yeah. If we find a solution. Exactly. I mean, this, this was all pretty much laid out in the, in the um, water report, but this is where the rubber hits the road. This is where we paper it. We increase the size of the Harvey, sorry, of Magn- Mag tank. Right, your idea sounds, I keep seeing more interest in these though, I guess. Um, do you buy that is the punch? No, because uh, part of Magnesia flows by even in summer. The reason that we can't put more houses on that. So we spec- we speculated we ran out of water, it was Harvey's gonna dry up, but not now? No, it's not never, hopefully it never dries up. Supply will be less. I'm assuming, we don't know because measurements were never taken, that mag and Harvey will decrease proportionally the same. Okay. That we know is not necessarily the case because, you know, Alberta declines less in the summer. I think we're getting into destruction. Yes, exactly, I mean, this is. In in terms of of allocating money, I think. For prudent sake, I I think that million dollars is needed, if not now, this year.
Carl, I still think we uh, we need to move on a, on a further, further study on the wells because i- if. You know, we've, we've seen that that recent fire scare here just in the last day or two. And if we have something like that happens in the summer, uh, we're gonna be looking for an alternative water source. So I I think we, we really need to uh, spend a little bit of money or at least. Uh, find out what sort of cost it would be to, to do more further research and possibly drilling.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, and and that's not budgeted and and because, you know, it came up, so I was going to putting this budget together. But uh, the proponent of that, uh, that original study, which is now twenty five years old or twenty years old. Um, he's going to be tasked with with actually. I I was quite stunned to find that they never actually attended the village to put their report together. So they need to actually come and see uh, just how steep our terrain is and how inaccessible, et cetera, et cetera. There is a test study.
No, you're right. But I do think that we need to diversify anyway, you know, as many ways as we can.
Sure, you've seen the water.
At one point, you look at all these different things and I think the drilling may may.
It's all in the water, but it's just one of your options are there.
Is it, is it, is it feasible? Is there some creative sort of cross pollination that could happen? And I mean, we've got a hall here that that is looking at, looking at a significant cost of converting it over to heat pumps. But we're looking at that traditional air, air driven heat pumps. What, have we looked at?
We discussed that in the last meeting, but I think that needs to go back to, it's basically an I C discussion. You can do some options.
So it makes some sense to do some drilling, you know, nearby that that because it's in the geothermal, which is.
There's details, doesn't answer what allocate the money. The question is now, we want to put that nine hundred thousand, we just want to put in design money for now, so that looks like we're gonna lose all our reserves. Or council, we're taking the piece, confident we're gonna need it for the years. Yeah, I guess we're funding now.
So I can ask Joe a question. I might put you have that at your fingertips, Joe, the core tax burden, increase. They will increase tax burden for the core budget to six percent. What additional percentage would this one point eight six six million. Represent? So what would that take?
That's, yeah, we know, we know, there's a stupid. It's about fourteen, fourteen thousand dollars per percent. So divide that number by fourteen thousand and you'll get the percentage tax increase. Although I will point out, there's no debt in that, either borrowing from ourselves or borrowing from the bank.
Ultimately, these items, they're either off the list, they're paid for by, by reserves. Or they're paid for by borrowing. Or taxation, taxation is one of those. So none of those are palpable and must come off the list. Joe, divide one point eight six six by fourteen thousand.
Eighteen six six six?
One point eight six six million. You make next to zeros up.
Okay. You've got, you've got an extra few digits in the number there.
Okay, if eighteen hundred and sixty six divided by fourteen. Which is.
Hundred thirty three percent tax increase.
Yeah.
Hundred thirty three.
Hundred thirty three percent.
Yeah, so come to them with tax increase.
Definitely, okay.
And this is the doors on reserve. The one point exists, it represents uh. The funding that's required now.
Okay, so where are we trying to get you? I don't know. I am, I know.
How many capital, drawing one point nine million dollars from assets? That's the budget, that's the budget we need.
Okay, so if. If we're not comfortable fully one point eight million, one point nine million from the reserves, then we'd have to reduce what's on the list. Or come up with another way of of generating it, right? Property taxation, so bond profit, we have property tax ultimately from six percent. Which is what you establish tentative for your core, to some other number. Yeah.
And then coming to methods until that, any, it's fourteen thousand dollars, we want to see. Yeah, it's about, it's about fourteen, whatever it is this year, depends on assessment.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot. Maybe a little bit. Probably even as much, you put ten percent tax increase, you get a hundred and twenty K. Yeah. Isn't that?
Yes, tax is not gonna do it, that's. Okay, um.
And let me remind everyone, this, this was issued, all the other projects that are going, the credits and these are all being built. Into two budget and do not have any cost.
Okay, so what's your goal for the future?
Um, my goal for tonight was to uh. Deliver uh, to council an understanding of what, uh, you know, is coming down the road and um, to give an explanation of what. If you fund it through taxation, purely what tax rate increases would look like. Um, I believe uh, I I got some feedback that perhaps we take off some of these larger projects. Off the table until we have more certainty as to how they're going to be funded. If we take them off the top of the table, um, we can look at seventy, eighty percent tax increase and get it still be in the black. Um, so I would uh, back to council with a. Revised five year plan, uh, with a, I believe twenty five first, okay, well, obviously, you go for good. Kind of the, the nine dollars there for, for um, the um, water contingency. Um, and uh, gonna present some numbers on a balanced budget for a five year plan. And then identify these items, ones that are not included in the five year plan, farm scale projects. That potentially could have um, grant funding. Um, but on their setting, that would come back and then add them in when we have more certainty as to, you know, have we even applied for it, can we get it? But just take it off the table, so we're not taxing for it right now.
So we want to prepare to be opportunistic when grant funding comes available or or whatever happens, but. They need to be realistic in terms of the, what we can, we can accomplish. Okay.
Um, that's what I was trying to, that's what.
We were trying to get to, okay. Okay, uh, further questions for, for Joe? Okay, so are we?
Can I suggest that maybe a few of these key items, like snapshots of the hundred and thirty three percent tax increase we just discussed, twenty four percent? Like a cou- couple of these slides. In the village update or in attachments in the village update, or, I mean, we have like six people in the galleries tonight.
I think we've done that before, that we put that out, I mean, the monitoring thing, but hundred and thirty three percent, that's not telling anyone that number, it's just a certain number, you know?
I think unless it has real context, I think it's it's problematic. I think we have to be higher level.
I think that there's some way we need to communicate to residents and more than six of them. What the actual reality is, what our reality is.
I I think people are pretty, pretty aware of it, and we just need to keep, keep that story coming forward.
I think that's gonna be, I I think that's gonna be the town hall meeting that Ross is suggesting. Uh, because, you know, we, we need to have a discussion and we need to. Uh, decide where, you know, what the vision of the village is and what it's gonna take to achieve that and. And uh, because obviously it's uh, uh, even just to sustain. Um, our, our standard of living or or what we're used to in the village right now is going to be uh. Um, definitely something that we, we've all gotta, we've all gotta buy into. So I, I think uh. Your suggestion is is good, Counselor Conliff, that, that we need to share this with the village. Um, but we need to have a little bit broader group participate in that. So that's probably gonna be some sort of a town hall meeting.
Fair.
So I'm gonna ask a question. Jody, how much you need with the twenty four for the for budget? Is council satisfied with that number, one point eight six six? Could be taken out of reserves. You prepared to move on from that and move into. Next discussion around the the five year plan or you wanna spend more time either now or next meeting? Going through that, that list of supplementals, shaving it down or not shaving it down?
I think we've seen it often enough, but I need to look at it again. I think the next meeting is a council meeting, you make a decision. We have a budget.
So is, my hearing that there's comfort around what Joe was presenting around those supplemental sheet, how it's funded?
I have one question. How much is left in the um, the approved debt financing for infrastructure? Approved. The vote, the vote is approved, I think it was three point seven million dollars.
It's uh, not been drawn down, but there's room. I don't have the exact number.
But is it, is it a hundred thousand dollars or is it a million dollars? It's over a million. Okay, so, so there is debt room to fund the infrastructure according to what the referendum uh, approved. Yeah. I, I know, just getting back to the referendum, there was confusion at one point that it. That it needed to be grant funded and needed to be on infrastructure. Um, nice to play. In order, in order to do that. There was not, there was not a legal requirement? But it, yeah, but the resolution doesn't actually read that, and the referendum didn't read that. It was a council. Sort of rules were kind of. The council at the time said for the term of this council, it will not approve funding under this. Yeah. Referendum. There's nothing, there's nothing that binds us, so we could spend that and not have a tax without a grant. Where you can spend that, you know, hundred cents on the dollar and do the infrastructure project to your point, and we can then just fund it through, through debt. Correct. So how long, the question is, how, how long am I gonna pay off over, or is that what, was in the failure? Interest rates are high and out, but it is, it's like, or does it? It would be a new draw, so it would be on current interest rates. Current interest rates. But as the interest rates come down, the payment doesn't go down, you actually end up paying more less. So it's not fixed. They are understanding the failures, they're not fixed. Um. Payment's fixed, the interest rate isn't.
Yeah, that's where you'll be, well, there's an uh, actual gain, a lot of fair value, I would knock that out. Um, yeah, the payment's fixed, the payment are semi annual. Um. I can spend.
It's, it's. Great, good, it's not the way I just give you this. I'll, I'll just do the. Payment's fixed, tax rate as if the interest rate fluctuates. You either end up having to pay more at the end or you end up paying it all fast. I think that's what that actuarial adjustment is typically see all the time, so I think that's the. I think that's right. Right.
So I, I, I uh. I wanna continue to look at this, this honestly, in terms of. Not comfortable with one point eight six coming out of, out of uh, this year's, it's fine.
Yeah. So can we look at the next time on the point of view that the nine hundred thousand is. Comes out of the. Why?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the nine hundred.
Then incorporate the, the analogues on costs, it's maybe in operating our interest expense.
Yeah.
Yeah, either.
Then if we don't get it, and we don't get, then we don't find a solution. We haven't. I can ask for it. That's not even tagged it.
That's all part of our strategic discussion as well, you know?
Well, this is from this place, we have, we have a real question, we can't do this, right?
Yeah, I understand. But I'm just saying that, you know, working that, that. How comfortable with all issues with debt, how comfortable with different ways of approaching them, so. Yeah. Okay, um, are we done? But I move for a German. The move, so in the council, I'm gonna say, council out, who's always favorite.
We need to publish this, it's not the end.
We all need to be bow participation.
So you have come.
We need to be special. I'm sorry, giving you.
She's.
It was happening.
Okay, uh, my apologies, uh, we did have an updated public participation, should anyone wish to comment or ask a question. You went in the gallery? No. You went online? No. Okay, thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Welcome to the journal, have a little second there, on a favor.